Steve Abner, St. George, Mayor Commissioners, it's March twenty seventh, twenty twenty fourth. This is our work session. It is now five thirty. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have an agenda before us to have a motion to adopt. So that was Mike. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was Graham. All of us say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number three, the first item of discussion is the sanitation and stormwater fees. Mr. Commissioner?
Yes. So if y'all recall, last year, the county asked its municipalities to move up, setting fees for sanitation and stormwater assessments to mid-April, prior to the military so that they can go ahead and process all of that prepared bills. They are asking, of course, of the same of us this year and where in the future. So we have had a stormwater unit fee of a hundred and eighty dollars for the past several years, which has provided us with enough resources to maintain the stormwater system and to provide some capital assistance. Just to let you guys know that, you know, the majority of our capital funding for stormwater projects comes from other sources, not necessarily the stormwater fee itself. But the stormwater fee does provide some additional capital resources. So I'm not asking y'all to set any fees tonight. This is just the first discussion, and we have to do it by the April tenth meeting. But something to consider in the future, if not now, is whether or not we want to build in some sort of natural escalator for stormwater fees to address future stormwater capital projects. And when y'all want to begin that, if you want to begin that. The sanitation fee, you know, we've calculated the, you know, base sanitation fee to be three hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-eight cents per residential household. That's the only fee that you need to establish because the fee for commercial is not going to be handled through property tax assessments. It will, we haven't determined exactly how we're going to handle that bill yet, whether it's going to be billed through the city or if it's going to be billed directly through the vendor. But needless to say, this is only impacting the residential properties in the community. Staff is recommending a fee of three hundred and eighty dollars per household instead of three seventy-three twenty-eight for building up, you know, an emergency reserve within the sanitation fund, just in case we need it. Because we still have sanitation-related services that are being provided in-house rather than via contract, most notably yard waste. So that's going to be our recommendation, just essentially a six-dollar cushion to provide us with an emergency fund within, or an emergency balance within our sanitation fund. Other than that, there's no additional news to be discussed, so the stormwater side of that, you know, this is up to you guys.
How long has it been already?
This would be the third year, I think. Yeah. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Yeah.
Is there like a recommendation that you guys have?
What we suggested, so I think it, stormwater is difficult because not every property is the same, but every property is essentially assessed the same way. But you'll have homes, for example, that have more impervious surface than other homes. So their impact into the stormwater system is actually greater. There's just no real easy way for us to assess on a home-by-home basis based on their, you know, impervious site. What we've tried to do is to begin encouraging properties to take some stormwater measures into their own hands with some, you know, resources that homeowners can use to improve the runoff coming from their property. And we've discussed at some point in the future that we do not have staff resources to do that yet, to have varying stormwater rates according to, you know, you know, residential properties demonstrating that they are installing stormwater reduction methods. And I think that's where we want to get to, is that we have a fee and that if you can demonstrate that you're reducing the stormwater burden from your own property, then we could decrease that fee for you specifically. We're not there yet. But stormwater is an issue that is never going to go away. We are going to continuously have, you know, stormwater infrastructure need, especially given the fact that the majority of the infrastructure throughout DeKalb County is well past its useful life, and that stormwater infrastructure is very expensive, as we have seen. And it only continues to rise. So it's just stuff to keep in mind as we move into the future. Right now, we're solvent, and I don't want to suggest otherwise, meaning that we're collecting enough money to maintain the system and to put some back for capital expenditures. It's just that that need will never go away, and we just need to be mindful of that.
Patrick, can I just say for everyone, just as a point of clarity, that while we're encouraging homeowners, we are, there are requirements for new construction and any kind of additions or anything like that. So, so anybody who's doing something like that is automatically being required to better their stormwater situation. Yeah.
Yes.
And when you mentioned a natural escalator on that fee, does that mean that, you know, we could decide?
Well, not like you want to increase it by CPI or something, that's what I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, by escalator.
Okay.
Which I think is probably something, a direction we should go in because the cost of maintaining and replacing infrastructure escalates on a yearly basis, just as the cost of any other capital product, like asphalt or steel or concrete or, you know, you name it. So we can't, my point is, we can't keep it flat forever. But, yeah. Especially if we want to implement possible reductions for bonus work.
Right.
So really, we have to decide anything at the next meeting?
If we want to change this.
Well, I think if we were to do that, we'd, you know, need to look at the projects and...
Yeah, and that's why we're not making a staff recommendation on that this year because we don't have the resources to handle an expansion of the program. Just something to keep in mind. However, the recommendation of three eighty for the sanitation fee.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Well, and we will be talking about any bonds soon.
For SPOST?
Yes.
Yes. So if y'all recall, part of our ballot question that voters responded to in November included the ability to bond SPOST proceeds so that you could, the theory is money now is cheaper than money in the future. So if you go ahead and bond them now, you get cheaper money to, to use for less expensive projects. Whereas if you collect on a month-to-month basis, the cost of those projects exceed the value of the dollar. We are going through a legal process now to prepare ourselves to be able to do that. Steven is, has been handling the court process for bond validation. Davenport is working on a prospectus for us, much like they did for the URA bonds, where they will kind of give you, paint you a picture of the current economic environment and the current interest rate environment, so we know kind of what the bang for our buck is. The Fed has recently announced that they intend to reduce the federal interest rate multiple times throughout the year. So that's, that's something that we will also need to keep in mind as we determine if and when is the best time to move forward with, with that bonding effort. Now, this is a bonding effort that really doesn't affect our debt limit because it's essentially a revenue bond, meaning that the money for that bond that we receive on a monthly basis will be used to pay off the debt on it. So it's, it's not, we're not incurring any additional debt with it.
Just being smarter.
Yeah.
Um, okay. I think, you know, the stormwater, just leave it alone for now and see where we are with the bond issue and all that.
Yeah.
Three eighties, that's six and change. So we would vote on that next meeting. Okay. And just, I guess this next year with the bond, take a look at the priorities and...
And so by next year, we, I think, I do think by next year, we need to take a serious look at how the stormwater fee will evolve on an ongoing basis.
Yeah. All good?
Works for me.
Sounds good.
So I'll go to item three?
Yeah, okay. Item four, consideration of a contract for notice to proceed on two seventy-eight.
Yeah. So the next two items, so I don't have to talk metric. And Shannon's knowledge of them is far better than mine, so I'm just turning it over to Shannon and letting her go.
So first of all, these are little things that, that Karina has us doing. So there are summary pages for each here.
I'm sorry.
I like the requested action.
Yes, right. So these are fantastic, you know, subject, moon, date, the department, budget allocation, funding source, a summary, and then, so kudos to Karina for leading us down this path. Maybe it makes it easier for you guys in the future. So we're going to be trying to get these out ahead, but this is a first, first shot, so took me a minute. Okay, so first of all, I never thought we would be at this point, or at least at some point. So this is awesome. This discussion is about the two seventy-eight Complete Street Program. If you remember, just for kicks, it runs from Ashton Place to Sam's Crossing, ten-foot path, lights, trees, alternating medians and parallel parking.
Synchronized signals.
Synchronized signals. It's, it's
A golf cart crossing.
A golf cart crossing. We bid the project in December, and the bids came in quite high. So we have not brought this to you because we needed to figure out the money. ARC, thankfully, agreed to give us another two million dollars in order to help make this project whole and have given us, and the two million dollars, they can improve administratively. They've said they would, and they will do it the first week in April. So we will know for sure with paper in our hands that it has happened by that Friday, and these contracts, we're bringing these contracts through to you while that process is going on so that we can execute and execute quickly. The road bid is a company called IP, and the product, this is a road bid. So the team that I'm working with knows them. They're reputable. We went through their bids and they have been accepted, so things are, they're on solid footing and are in a position to start the, start the process. We negotiated with them to hold their bids through May first. And so, because of course, they don't hold bids forever, and we were kind of in this limbo world. So they have done that, and so they're, they're ready to go, and we are getting things finalized, and so we're bringing it to you. There are four contracts that are part of this project. There is a JDOT project that you don't really negotiate. They said, take it or leave it. Here are the federal guidelines, here are state guidelines. You agree to meet them, and we'll give you the money. That's kind of how that works. The second one is IP's construction contract. They have a lot of requirements. They, we pass along many of these requirements that the state and the feds do. They have a plan, they're building to the plan, they bid, they have, it's a remiss bid. They've put it in front of us. It's been accepted. Their contract just does just that. We have two others. STANTEX, who's our design team, has given us contract to do construction administration. What that means is they make sure that the contractor actually builds the plan, builds the project per the plan, and they do inspections. We have a fourth contract with a small organization called Midtown ATL that provides internal staff. If you've ever looked at these federal guidelines, it's intimidating. And so, and the reporting is extensive. And if you miss, they will, they threaten to take the money back or make you pay it back. So this person would stand kind of over the shoulders of me and part of me and Kristen, namely, to make sure that we don't mess up. It gives us a little bit more confidence. I've always had that person in my, that role within the scope of projects that I've managed, and I think it's, I think it's well worth the money to have that security and have that backup. Plus, we're such a small staff, and we already do a lot, so having, you know, this is daily reporting and going on-site and taking photos and all that kind of stuff, so.
And I'm pretty sure I've discussed this with you guys individually, if, if, at least the old, the older generation of the board, is that Shannon has a relationship with this, the guy at this firm, his name's Bruce. He's also going to help us with figuring out how to plan the phasing and how to communicate detour and all that kind of stuff. And he's already been an invaluable resource.
Yeah. I have him look at, look at the existing contracts, and he flags things for us to look at, which often helps me when I go back to Steven to say, hey, this is what Bruce said. Let's talk about whether this is important to us or not. So Steven obviously is looking at all of these contracts and making heads or tails of all of them and making sure everything is tipped and tied, as it's often said. And so that's kind of where those are. Now, these are numbers that you see at the very bottom of your little sheet. You see everything racked up. I will point to the, so you see a total, I'll point to the two million, which is the new money. That's the ARC money. They have said we can apply for another four hundred thousand. That, they can only do that much administratively. So it's not a guarantee, but it's a longer, more involved process to add additional money because it would go significantly over the original estimate. So, but we are eligible, and we'll go through that process once we get through this one, and it would be a subsequent. So that gives us some, you know, some opportunity down there that's in front of us that might help us to reduce this further.
And Shannon, maybe, sorry, but in the meantime, we're talking. If we were to get the extra four hundred thousand, that would reduce our cost overrun burden to around a hundred thousand dollars, which is incredibly huge. In fact, some of the contract is reserved for contingency as well. So if we do not need to use all the contingency funding, whether it is possible with the help of ARC that they actually reduced our cost burden from our original budget, which of course would be fantastic. And then we could allocate those resources to other projects.
IP's construction is seven million. That's the construction cost. Hundred and thirty-six thousand is Bruce's, cost a hundred and thirty-nine is, I mean, thirty-nine thousand is STANTEX. And then JDOTs is, doesn't have a cost. It's a revenue. It's how we get the money. So I, so this is obviously a work session. We're just bringing you up to speed, telling you where we are. Our timeline for this is pretty quick because of, because we've been holding it for a while. So as soon as ARC approves it, Steven gets a hold and gives, makes sure that we haven't missed anything in these contracts. We'll be coming back to you at the next meeting and asking you to, all of this is within the budget already, and so you're being asked just to authorize or to affirm the expenditure of money on, for these projects, for this purpose, and give the mayor authorization to sign the contracts. Would like to be started. Some of it, once all that happens, JDOT gives us a notice to proceed. I don't know how long it'll take them. I mean, it could be twenty-four hours, and it could be JDOT time. It's hard for me to know, but we would begin as soon as possible with the goal of having notice to proceed before May first and construction to start before June first. And by the next meeting, I should know much more specifically exactly when we will, when we will organize our first meeting, our kickoff meeting, when we will do a groundbreaking, and when they will start construction.
Wow. Exciting.
Yeah. Nice.
Big deal. Yeah. Very big deal. Very big deal. So Shannon, the, the lights are wrapped into this budget. Yes. The travels initially, that was going to be a different
It was.
And then it got pulled in.
Yes. So the initial numbers only included, didn't include those, or sort of different, different project there. JDOT has a project that is updating and changing up forty signals throughout this quarter and all the way down. And that project is somewhere, but not at the same place that we are. And we saw that early on and knew that it would be a problem for us during construction. So we've pulled those in, and those have been, it is part of the, you know, it contributed to the delay of the project. But JDOT ended up adding more money to this project in order for us to incorporate those. And those will be handled when we do the project, which is, makes, makes so much more sense. I mean, it never made sense for them not to be a part of this. It was too hard to construct, and you need to be able to time them. So it took a little extra, but I think it was worth it.
You know, I forgot about the golf cart crossing, which I think I told you guys we weren't doing it. But forgot about it. But I do want to talk about that more because I'm still concerned about really young drivers crossing that road.
Okay.
It's, it's in the approved plan. We can't take it down.
It's a crosswalk, so, you know, if we want to enforce it or have some local legislation.
I remember talking about the public meeting. It kind of got put in there, but I'm still very concerned about that because we allow fifteen-year-olds to drive golf carts. So we gotta allow fifteen-year-olds to cross two seventy-eight?
Well, we let them cross on a bike.
The crossing is going to be at a, at a traffic signal, right? It's gonna, and it's gonna have like a, the same kind of thing as
It's a protective crossing.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just like walking or biking.
Okay.
That's right. It's, you can't just play fodder.
Well, yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking. There's gotta be, I was assuming it was at a traffic, I just wanted to make sure that was.
At a traffic light, we could drag it to the park.
We may want to remind folks that fifteen is the age to drive golf carts now. There's a lot of youngsters out there driving golf carts.
I remember fifteen pretty well. This is why I'm concerned about, it's sixteen, isn't it?
No.
Golf carts are, to drive a golf cart, you have to follow the same standards as your driver's license. So you have a learner's permit, you have to have someone twenty-one years older with you in the front seat. The class D provisional license restrictions apply to golf carts. Non-family members are allowed for six months after that. We have up to, I think it's one or two passengers until you get a class D license, and then you're unrestricted. And that's under state law.
Yeah, I was gonna say, nobody's following that.
No.
Okay.
Well, that's an important.
That's a whole different discussion, but, yeah. And in the crossings there, so if we discuss anything, it'll be enforced.
First, you think he'll come back and say, no, from a public policy, it's just a crosswalk.
It doesn't have to be for golf carts.
Doesn't have to be.
Yeah, okay. And we didn't
Look, JDOT's not gonna complain if you decide against it.
Yeah. Okay. We weren't really here to talk about that. So what's next? We'll vote on this at the April meeting?
April tenth.
Okay.
We'll bring, we'll bring it back, right? And then other details will come, you know, just in general, in terms of project, how the project gets managed, stuff like that.
I mean, I don't really have any questions, you guys?
I would just say I'm really happy that we're going to be adding Bruce Pinkney and that you will have help with this because wasn't it something like the largest project of its kind that JDOT has ever?
But that was the, the concept report, which is
Oh, that was the concept report. Whatever the case, it's, it's a really big project. It's such a small
It's a big project. It's, you know, this is in a tiny rural road. This is a
Yeah.
This is, this will require a lot of attention.
Yeah.
Well, if you've been driving down DeKalb lately
Yeah.
of like Kroger, you're like, oh. Yeah.
So I'm glad to see that.
I have good questions.
All good.
Just for my information, is, are there schematics about online? What's it going to look like?
We have a project page for it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
I think I had, I think when we were doing the bidding, I took the construction drawings there so that people didn't get confused, but we'd have them in our office if you want to come hang out and look at construction drawings.
What, what side are they gonna start?
I don't know that. I wouldn't know that until the first meeting, maybe till our kickoff meeting.
Cool.
I can guess, but
Just curiosity.
Just make odds.
And that's what Bruce is gonna be helping us determine.
Okay. All good? So voting this next time, so might as well just jump into the next one.
The next one. Yeah, we have a compost grant.
It's good. It's great.
This is a, this is a partnership with Ted Taylor's office and Compost Now, along with two other partners that will help distribute compost. This is a pilot project to explore and learn from doing residential curbside composting. It will be a year-long project. It starts in, it will begin this summer with promoting, getting people signed up, and we anticipate starting with the compost collections in, in the fall. This, the compost gets collected, and then it gets given to two different organizations. One is Roots Down. Roots Down manages edible gardens at the DeKalb Library, so it'll get redistributed there. And then the other is for Food Row Alliance, which provides the composting back to Black and Indigenous and people of color, color farmers in the Atlanta area. So a way to give back and take things out of the land, take land out of the, take stuff out of the landfill. It's the, the total package, the total brand is for four hundred thou, because it's literally four hundred thousand. We have two roles. We are the project managers, so the grant came through us because Abner was small enough to actually be a really good pilot site. And then we have thirty thousand in in-kind contributions in the terms, in terms of project management, marketing, communications, and newsletters get done internally. DeKalb is similar, except they've got, they have more in-kind contributions, and the vast majority of the work is obviously done by Compost Now, who has experience doing composting. So this is more of an FYI. You'll see, we haven't, right now, we're still answering endless questions for the US Department of Agriculture on how this is going to work. And once we finish that, we expect to get the contract paperwork that allows us to move forward in your, and we'll give you an update. We'll come, probably come back with a similar thing, asking you for authorization to allow the mayor to sign.
Awesome.
This is something our residents will just
This is something our residents will just cannot, will be able to opt in to.
You can opt in. We have the role. This is, we've done this before with a lot of success with the plastic bag. We learned a lot from that process, project.
And so we'll be buying, will the city have to buy buckets and things like that? Or is that all?
That's.
Part of the grant.
Comes with the grant. Okay. Cool.
We generate a lot of stuff.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, it would be interesting. I think, you think you can contract separately with com- compost now, um, and pay a fee. But this will be part of the pilots. We learned how it works and where you can do it on, um, any, you know, whether we can scale it. And then how you can redistribute it in a positive way. So super fun, great thing for the city. Um, I think it's in keeping with our overall kind of value system. So.
Yes. So would that be voted upon at the next meeting?
Uh, maybe.
Maybe.
Depends, um. On what, how fast they get back to us. It's probably going to be, I thought it was going to be, but it may actually be, um, a few meetings down the road.
That's right. Well, I think it's great. I mean, we just, we used to do it because we had a more sunny yard and then we quit doing it because we don't really use it. But we, yeah, generate a lot of busy waste. So be great.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Uh, I mean, just after this, this grants per year, right? So after that, what's typical, like composting fees if someone like?
I don't remember. Ellen, do you remember? No, I don't remember. I'll find out though. I knew at one point, but it's escaped my head.
It's cool that it could be provided and someone can try it out and see if they like it without having to.
I think the county would like to expand it, uh, well beyond, um, Abingdon. But Abingdon, Abingdon really works as a good testing ground to see if we can make it work, whether people participate. How it will function and what the opportunities and challenges are.
And Commissioner Terry has indicated that if the pilot is a success, then he would explore generating funding from the county to be distributed to cities who might want to continue. Cool. So they'll vote, we'll figure that out kind of based on participation and.
So I want all of you guys to participate.
All right, uh. We're gonna have public comment right after this, so.
Actually, I think I'm done.
I was really looking for Lionel online, but. Well, he indicated he might June, but, okay. All right. So that's everything. Okay. And that concludes our work session, public comment.
Dan, however, eighty-nine Berkeley, just one of the many things you guys do for us, this city. It's just so exciting. That, my only comment was that typically there are P D S for things like what you guys got tonight, um, below down on the contract. For this, for the street. I don't think, I mean, I sure don't know how much we're spending, what other money we got from other sources. And I think that I, I, I think residents might be interested in knowing that.
Are you saying it wasn't posted online?
It is.
It's posted online?
Yeah, it's part of the agenda packet.
I looked in the agenda and didn't see any P D S.
Yeah, it's there.
Okay, I just missed it. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I actually got it off of the city site to.
Yeah, those mini-randems about the complete data and compost program are on in the agenda packet.
It might not have been there Friday afternoon.
Okay, well, thank you. Sorry. I take it all back.
No, no, no. It, I'm gonna blame it on the website. Yeah. Okay, uh, that's Rachel.
Rachel, I'm also a co-owner for our studio. I actually want to make a quick comment. Um, I'm sort of here representing the businesses. We're trying to get somebody from businesses here at these meetings. And regarding the golf cart crossing, I sort of feel like all the businesses would be more golf cart crossing. However, definitely the rules need to be pumped out into citywide. Um, because I do feel also as we get down and it will be safer. Hopefully, once all the work is done, it'll probably be easier to navigate as well. I've just been texting with some people and they're like, we want.
No, it's, I don't know. I'm just, you know, being really cautious. I, uh, you know, about the safety of the crossing.
And that is completely unexamined.
Yeah. Yeah, so anyway, but yes, I, you know, and I need to think more about like, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm for it, okay? I just want us to be very careful because once something bad happens, you can't undo it.
Yeah.
And, uh, but it will definitely be a great benefit. I mean, it's, and it's kind of becoming our thing a little bit, you know, it's like. So I think it's a cool thing that Abingdon does and it'd be great if it extends over to the business district. So certainly. And we want two seventy-eight. I mean, if you were at the state and city, I mean, we do want that to be less of a barrier for folks.
Yes.
To come over to the C B D and be able to walk around comfortably, confidently, you know, golf carts, bikes, whatever, families. So, uh, yeah, thank you.
Yes, um, delivering nine Berkeley Road. Um, with regard to the, uh, our friends. Our neighbors at the, at the town green. I am presuming it's too early to be asking about what their plans are at this point. But would want to take this opportunity to encourage. The mayor and board to, uh, not, uh, uh, back away from. The downtown development plan and the, and requirements for the, the completing the city grid. And for controlling, um, uh, heights of buildings, uh, as, um, as you have been to date. It's good that they're doing something, uh, but, uh, I am hoping that they aren't using that as some sort of odd leverage to, um, to. Get something that is not to the benefit of the city overall, in, in a part of the good plan.
And so far, I don't think that's the case.
I mean, because I, yeah, I've recognized there's been some concern on the part of the city with regards to their. Willingness to negotiate these.
I mean, they, they submitted a preliminary plan that, uh, is what they submitted some time ago that we all talked about, a little more staff. I mean, um, and I think everybody, you know. Said, hey, this is, you know, agreed to it. And, uh. Is it everything I would want or you would want or somebody else would want? I don't, it's not everything they want, you know, so it's, um. It's good. I mean, I think it's a good plan. So.
We haven't gotten anything official yet.
Right. But, uh, no, this is a really good indication. After, yeah. After everything, this is a very good indication. So. Yep. Uh, any other? Running a lot?
No.
All right. If there's no other comments, uh, what to bring it back up here? Um, we do have an executive session this evening, which means we're going to have to, uh, have to ask, uh, everybody but staff to leave. Uh, we will not be voting on anything, will we? So you can hang out if you want, but there will be no vote following the executive session as we are sometimes required to do. It's just a discussion, uh, but I do have to ask everybody to leave so we can talk about real estate. I appreciate everyone being here.